Let's call this meeting to order and stand for the pledge, please. Julie, roll call, please. Mayor Coleman, present. Counselor Mahler.
Present.
Counselor Trask.
Present.
Counselor Gorley.
Present.
Counselor Sanchez.
Here.
Counselor Richards.
Here.
Counselor Thorstedt.
Here.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda.
No move.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Roll call, please, Julie. Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Mahler?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Counselor Thorstedt?
Yes.
We have seven ayes and no nays. Next is recognition of visitors. Are there any visitors that would like to come forward? Actually, we have a presentation before we have visitors come forward.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. So, I'm getting feedback. Let me see what... How about this? No, I'll just do this. I'm good, thank you. Okay, so, we would like to recognize a staff member who has been... All right, that's... Can y'all hear me? Okay. All right, so we would like to recognize a staff member who has really gone above and beyond in pretty much all areas of her duties and taking on additional duties. And we would not be able to give some of the presentations that we're giving tonight without her. So, we'd like to talk about Cindy Robek. So, Cindy has been instrumental in all areas of our finance department. She has stepped in and helped in every single level of finance. She has taken on multiple new tasks and literally has taken on a task almost every day. She has come in on almost every weekend since the entire time that I have been here. She has been working during holidays. She went on vacation and still took her laptop with her so that we could reach out to her at any time, and she was still answering questions. She has provided oversight in history in various areas and is a key member of our team. We are so grateful for her service, and she also has been providing all of this service with enthusiasm and positivity. She's been able to direct her team and provide guidance to other departments as well. So, in the military, challenge coins are given for exemplary service and for going above and beyond. And so, while it's not much, we would like to present this challenge coin to Cindy Robek. So, I'm gonna go ahead and stand up, and if you all can please, join me in honoring Cindy.
Thank you so much, Cindy, and thank you, City Manager Young, for presenting that. I know Cindy has been working very hard. Any other visitors that would like to come forward to speak? Vince, remember, you need to give us your name and your address, which we might all know by heart. Use another one.
D Road. Good evening. Madam Mayor, Counselors, I'm here to show my support in talking to friends and neighbors about the three ordinances that you're about to adopt. We are all in support of that 100%. We're glad that we're taking steps to alleviate some issues that we have here in town with the motorhomes, campers, and all that other stuff. So, I just wanted to let you know that we support that, and we hope that that's gonna go forward in a positive manner. The other thing I would like to speak about is, and I'm gonna relate a little story here. It has to do with... This is gonna be new for Chief here. I'm not putting you on the spot, but again, I am putting you on the spot. This is the wrong-way parking on our streets and avenues up in residential areas. So, tonight is foggy. It's probably gonna be foggy in the morning. Now, let's say a couple of gentlemen, elderly gentlemen, decide they wanna go fishing. Citizen Mahler and Citizen Trask are on the phone, and Citizen Trask says, hey, you wanna go fishing tomorrow? Looks like it's gonna be a good day for that. He's like, well, what time you want me to pick you up? Oh, around 6:00, maybe a little before. Okay, that sounds good. In the morning, citizens get up, and Citizen Trask gets in his rig and he goes to pick up Citizen Mahler. And it's foggy out, and he's driving down the street. And all of a sudden, a set of headlights pop on right in front of him, and he doesn't know what to do. And most of us know that if you're driving down the road in a set of headlights or somebody comes at you, you should veer to the right, because if you veer to the left, that person recovers, and then you end up in a head-end. So, you veer to the right, you hope the other guy veers to the right, but you're coming up on a parked car that's faced the wrong way. Guy's just come out and turned his car on, getting ready to go to work, and hit his lights. So, what happens? Does Citizen Trask react and not hit the car, or does he react like he normally would and hit the car? Because it's faced the wrong way. Now, Citizen Mahler's sitting there at the house, wondering what's taking Citizen Trask along to get to his house. He's been in an accident up there because in the fog, this guy flipped his lights on, and he was on the wrong side of the road. It also creates a safety hazard in another way. In order to get out on the street and go the correct direction in the correct lane, you have to cross two lanes of traffic to do that. So, in the past, I had asked to have something done about this, and it doesn't seem like it got done. We have new leadership now. I know we have ordinances that concern parking. As we're traveling around, you know, enforcing some of these other things that we're gonna be looking at in the future here, very near future, we should also look at these. I don't mean this to be like a jackboot-type situation, you know, and hit 'em hard and fast. You know, stop, have the conversation. If nobody's there, leave a note with, you know, a card on the car, you know, to contact the police department or the city about their parking arrangements. Go in soft, get the information out there, and then, you know, if it's a repeat, you know, situation, then, you know, you kinda escalate the, you know, the consequences. One other thing is blocking sidewalks. It's come to my attention. I've seen it. I've had to deal with it with the grandkids on quite a few occasions. We're on walks or riding bikes. They can't ride in the street yet, you know, or on skateboards or whatever. And they literally have to go out in the street and around cars and trucks and vehicles that are parked on sidewalks. I'm not exactly sure what covers that, but I'm pretty sure we're not supposed to block sidewalks. So, if we could also kinda spot those things, garbage cans too, you know, things blocking the sidewalks, also vegetation. That's pretty much all I've got. Thank you very much for listening to me and letting me have the time. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, Vince. Also, Vince, later in this meeting, I will be establishing a traffic committee, and we might need some citizens to serve on that. And if that comes up, your service might be needed. Just saying. And any other visitors would like to come forward? Okay. Moving on, there's no old business. Onto new business. I'm going to be opening up a public hearing. Resolution number one for 2023, a resolution adopting a supplemental budget. I'll open the public hearing at 6:39. First, we need to go over our declarations. Do any council members need to declare a council of bias or conflict of bias, conflict of interest, or ex parte communication? Counselor Trask?
No.
Counselor Gorley?
No.
No. Counselor Thorstedt?
Nope.
And I have none either. Next is our staff report.
It's not on. Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, I'm gonna be giving an introduction, and then I'm gonna be turning it over to our Finance Director, Matt Brown, to actually be going into the budget itself. But I'll give just sort of a quick intro that I'm hoping will answer some preliminary questions that we've received. And then Director Brown can just actually go into the budget itself. So, you can go to the next slide. So, I just wanted to go over a few key points just to remember as you're looking at this budget and as you've been reviewing this, that this is just a supplemental budget that's designed to update, simplify, and include any missed items or any items that have come up since then. The 2024 budget, the 2324 budget, will come to council for approval in early summer. We're planning on starting that process in March, and it will be the typical budget process. And again, the main purpose of this one is just to simplify, sort of clean up the previous budget and any other issues that were there. One quick thing that I think is of interest is that the previous budget appropriation was $42.18 million, and the new supplemental budget is $40.60. So, we are doing a decrease, or we're asking for about $1.58 million less. But we're not cutting any services or anything along those lines. So, and it's mostly just asking for a little less. We have the advantage of having gone through about half of the year, so we've been able to see what our expenses are going to be. And Director Brown will speak to that a little bit more, but that's kind of how we ended up in this situation. So, I'm trying to change it on the screen too, which... Okay. So, what has changed? The overall organizational structure, and you actually all have a cheat sheet, and it's available that just talks about each of those changes. So, if you have any questions, that's available to you right there. And then, we just have reduced the funds and accounts. The transfers have already been completed, and Director Brown used this based on the audit of numbers as well and created this budget. So, these are some of the savings that we have been able to work on just over the last few months. And I wanna say another thank you to Cindy, because she has been keeping a spreadsheet of different ways that we've been saving and things that we've found too. So, by using Matt's services and not having a full-time Finance Director, we are saving about $100,000, and we're getting great service, so that's been working out pretty well. Changing the way that we're doing the IT contract, going with a new supplemental vendor and having our Communications Manager also handle some of that piece, we're saving about $66,000 this year. We're no longer using ClearGov for our budget, and that's gonna save about another $20,000. We... Cindy is pretty much key on having found all of this, but she's gone through and found different phones and other bills and other pieces that just haven't been used. And that's actually more like $15,000 in savings there as well. So, we have just over about $200,000 just in things that we've been able to identify in the past few months. Which is nice. We're excited about that. Now, we are gonna be talking in the budget. Some of the pieces to discuss are, we are asking for a new officer position. We, due to the crime that's sort of been in the area and also looking at traffic, and I'll let the Chief speak to this a little bit more later, but we do feel like it would be very impactful on our community to be able to go ahead and have a new police officer. We have the funds in the budget, and this would allow for additional oversight and where there is a fair amount of just... It's been challenging to retain some of our police officers. This would also give us another position so that we wouldn't be as short-staffed if somebody does take another position while we're filling that vacancy. It also would allow us to, next budget's term, come back and maybe try to make this position a sergeant position or a traffic control position or a combination thereof, or even look at adding another position. So, this would just be for the next six months. Hiring is still gonna be a little bit challenging, so the cost for this position would mostly be deferred until next year. My estimate would be, we'd only be paying for this position for about three months of this fiscal year. But that would put us in much better standing for next fiscal year. We'd be already ready to move forward, and we'd have, hopefully, a fully-staffed team. We also are asking for some money for abatements, and that some of those things would be for cleaning up properties as well as cleaning up RVs and other things that could support these ordinances that we'll hopefully pass tonight. And then, there's some capital improvements for the police station and capital improvements for City Hall. Most of these things were already included in last year's. We're just bringing them forward. And again, this is not anymore. We still have that savings of $1.58 million. Okay. So, we do have this... This is a little misleading, and I'm actually gonna let Director Brown speak to this a little bit more. But we have a fair amount of unappropriated funds. We, while we have asked to spend our SDCs, it is unlikely that we will be spending them this year. It's just easiest to have it structured this way so that if the council should decide that some of the SDCs should be spent, it's structured this way. But otherwise, these are various funds that will be available. Okay. So, I'm gonna hand it over. I wanna say a big thank you to Matt Brown, and also another thank you to Cindy Robek, and then all of the department heads and staff and council as well for allowing us to kind of go through this exercise. It's been a fair amount of work, and so, it's great to kind of be at this point. And again, huge thank you to Matt. He's been wonderful and he's been working very, very hard on this. So, I will turn it over to you to go ahead and actually go into the details. I got to just talk about the more fun stuff, so thank you for allowing me to do that, too.
All right. Counsel, thank you very much for having me tonight, and it's a pleasure to present to you a supplemental budget. Most of you have know it's been a long time coming. I think I've been with Sweet Home for six or seven months now since I first started. And my original scope was definitely a lot smaller than what it ended up being, but I'm very happy to be here and happy to help out. So, we'll go ahead and get started. I wanna make sure and let you know that this is definitely an open dialogue. So, if you have any questions or anything, I'm very open to you just popping up or raising your voice or hand or however you wanna do it to get my attention. I'm always happy to ask questions and go into as much of the weeds as you would like. So, what I'm presenting here is a presentation of kind of a general overview, and then I'll talk a little bit about each fund just to give you some more details, and maybe that might spur a little conversation for you. Does that sound good? Okay. So, we'll go ahead and get started with the general fund. In the previous iterations of your budgets, you had a general fund and an internal services fund. Your internal services fund had administration, finance, and those are typically things that you charge other departments to help fund those positions, 'cause admin doesn't bring any money, and finance typically doesn't bring in a whole heck of a lot, if anything, as well. So, most of the time, any department that is in the general fund is in there because they have to pool resources to pay for their services. So, what we've done to simplify things in this structure is we've gotten rid of the internal services fund and just moved all of those departments into the general fund. That way, everything is kind of in one place, so to speak. Okay? So, your general fund revenue, obviously, pretty self-explanatory, your beginning balance, is what you haven't spent. So, your contingency plus your unappropriated, plus anything in the budget that you didn't spend, all that adds up from the previous year and goes into your beginning balance for this year. Taxes are your property taxes. Intergovernmental revenue is your revenue sharing from the state of Oregon as well as franchise fees that you get from places like PGE or your phone companies, so they pay a fee to the city to allow you to, for you to allow them to provide services within your city. The grants, that specifically is a Parks and Recreation Grant that you received that you'll be using later on in the year, it sounds like, for some master planning and some other things, so. The support service charges, those are the internal charges that we're charging to other funds for your services. Specifically, you're gonna see the expense side of those support service charges in your water, sewer, and storm fund. So, for example, take your finance department. Finance department typically handles utility billing. So, you have two part-time staff that are out in your front office, and they do all the utility billing, taking the bills, people come in and pay their bills, all the customer service aspects of that. And so, a majority of their time is spent doing that work. So, it is within your right to charge those services to your enterprise funds, water, sewer, and storm. That money comes back into the general fund as revenue to help pay for that. So, that's what those support service charges are. So, we do the same thing, and it has to do a lot with your administration and your finance department, 'cause administration oversees your police department, your library, all the other departments. Finance does accounts payable and payroll for your police department, your library, and your enterprise funds, your water, sewer, and storm. So, we charge those services out to help kind of recover some of those costs as much as we think is realistic and appropriate. Okay? So, before we actually put the numbers into the budget, I do a salary and benefit spreadsheet with everybody with their true costs of what it costs to their, as what we call their fully burdened rate. And then, I sit down with Kelsey and all the other department heads. And for specifically like funds like your enterprise funds, your water, sewer, and storm, we have discussions about how much each person kind of spends doing each task. So, in your finance department, we think about Cindy and her job. How much time does she spend doing accounts payable for police? How much time does she spend doing payroll for the library? And so, that's, those are percentages based on their FTE that are put into a spreadsheet and calculates how much those support services are. So, at any time you want to take a look at that, that is a spreadsheet available, and Kelsey has that available to share with you, so you can see those expenses, and we can share that if you like. So, that's always available to you. Let's see. The charges for services. Go back to my cheat sheet here. So, those are gonna be your licenses, permits, fees, passports, and any kind of fines or anything like that. So, pretty self-explanatory there, I hope. And then, your miscellaneous is mainly your interest charges. I typically, in a general fund, based on the size of your government and looking at the past, you roughly receive anywhere from about 35 to 50 grand in just miscellaneous revenue, just kind of random things that come in that don't belong to any other category specifically. And so, I budget 50 grand for that. And then, for your interest, it looks like we've been receiving some pretty good interest payments, 'cause interest rates are pretty high right now. So, it's a good time to be investing, and your local, most of your funds are either in the local government investment pool or with an outside investment firm that we have that will do investments for you in short- or long-term kind of terms. Any questions on the general fund revenue? Okay. Can we go to the next slide? So, these are all your departments within your general fund. So, administration, city council has their own department, community and economic development, finance, municipal. You can kind of see they're all there. Capital outlay is a couple of specific things that Kelsey had mentioned in the past or in, I'm sorry, previously in her presentation to do some upkeep work. And then, you have your contingency and unappropriated. So, for those that don't know, and I'm not sure what level of knowledge everybody has for how budgeting works in the state of Oregon, contingency funds are what I like to consider your, a soft savings account. It's money that you can appropriate to spend and have an option to move that money to a specific department for spending. So, if you wanna hire an assistant city manager, you could move contingency money over to help pay for that position. It is appropriated so that you can spend it. Anything that is listed in unappropriated means it's basically hands-off. You're putting it into a separate little bucket that you can't touch unless you have a natural disaster or a city emergency. And that means declaring a state of emergency before you can even spend those dollars. So, yes.
Is she, is Kelsey asking for an assistant?
No.
I'm just asking.
I'm sure she probably wouldn't mind, but no, she's not asking. So, that's kind of a rough overview of your general fund. Any questions or department-specific questions that either department heads here or I can answer?
Madam Mayor, can I ask a question? Or two or three? So, on the expenditure sides, there was a couple of things that looked a little bit strange, such as the administration materials and services for 1.2 and 21 and 22, and then proposed 22, 23 for $50,000. Can you explain maybe why it was so much back then and why we're proposing so little right now? Where did that savings come from?
So, when I put together the budget for the document that you're seeing this year, we've gone back and combined the internal services fund with the general fund. So, a lot of those expenses that you're seeing in the previous years of materials and services are from those fiscal years, but from the internal services fund. And what I can best describe without having the detail to go in, I've placed expenses where it felt was the most appropriate. So, if I saw a charge in the internal services back in 2021 for X or whatever that is, based on whatever description the system has, I can probably put that where I think it's best should be located within the budget, so that way, everything is combined in one document, so you're comparing apples to apples.
Okay.
That's a long way of saying, I can do my best to give you a best guess of where an expense should be in the new fund structure, looking back.
Okay. Thank you.
For specifics, I would have to probably have a little bit more time and probably drag Cindy in.
That makes sense. I appreciate just a little bit of clarity, because it is such a huge difference, so...
It is a huge difference, and it's something that we did kind of take a second look at just to make sure I added up everything correctly, because it is such a big difference.
And then, if I could just make a little shameless plug. The city council only gets 0.0024% in the payroll expenses, so maybe with that savings that we found, we could add a little bit more. Not that I want the money, but 50 bucks a month is a little bit rough, so. The next, oh, it's professional services is your next portion of your thing, so I'll wait for that one. Thank you.
Did you mean professional services as in?
Well, it's your, on your next sheet for administr, I guess I could ask for right now. Professional services was at $207,000, and now it's $15,000, so that's also a giant jump, and I was just curious.
It looks like I do have a bunch of addition things that I've added in my formula. I'm happy to go back and provide you what those detailed line items are, would be, and I can probably email that to you by the end of the week, if that's...
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Just gonna write myself a note here. Okay. Anything else?
May I ask one more? Okay, so, I know we're probably not at this point, but you were saying that the interest is pretty high to generate revenue, and so, if you have a savings of $1.58 million while we're waiting to spend that money or use it, are you able to put that in some sort of fund to generate more revenue? Is that something that you guys have considered?
Yes. That is actually something that we are reviewing with GPA right now on what our potential investment strategy is. We've already gone, as we already had talked about in the previous council meeting, we've already gone a little bit more in investing than what we were doing before. And I actually have an email from them this evening, and we're gonna talk some more tomorrow, because we are looking at ways that we can use these savings to our advantage. Especially to potentially help fund some of the projects that we're hoping to look at in the next year or so.
I just don't want to miss an opportunity to make the money grow. And so thank you for looking into that. And thank you for finding all of the savings and all the hard work that you guys have done. And that's all my questions for this.
And I will mention too, we haven't had time yet, but I know it's on Kelsey and I's list to review our financial policies for the city. That will include your investment policies, which will kind of dictate how much we can invest and what we can invest in. So. Okay, so we'll move on to the next slide here, which is all your special revenue funds. So in our new structure, you have five main special revenue funds. Public safety is the first one. Obviously you have an operating levy that supports your police department and all their operations and contingency. And unappropriated funds are listed there. You have your community center, which is a small fund, but something we felt that needs to be kept separate so that we're not kind of missing or combing any kind of special use fund. So that remained a separate fund. We have a new enhancement fund, which is a combination of probably us, I think, three or four other separate funds that used to be separate that we're combining into one fund because they're really small in nature and don't get a lot of work. So we've created separate departments within the enhancement fund to identify each of those projects. So those would be things like your path program, your wetter bridge, special events. Oh, we added a pool fund because you take donations here at the city that you send down to the pool. So that's kind of a conglomerate of little patches of buckets that we can identify clearly in our budget. So that's what the enhancement fund is there for. You have your library fund, obviously with your library operating levy. So that operates everything in their budget. And then a transportation fund, which took the place of your street gas tax. And I think one other fund that we combined in there. Let's see. Oh, your public transit grant, which was a pass-through fund setup for when you get grants that go to other agencies. So that's all been combined in the transportation fund. I'm happy to talk in more detail. I kind of nerd out on budget stuff. So I know some people, it's kind of like, yeah, just give me the high-level details. Other people want to get into the weeds. So trying to find that balance with, with you as a council. So I'm happy to talk more specifically about each fund unless you are comfortable with what you see and I can move on to the next set of ones.
Mayor Coleman, I do have one question. I guess I'd have to double check, but it seemed like that community center fund was a lot lower than it has been.
Let's see.
Seems like there's, I thought that they had more funds going that, towards that, but something's changed.
So your community center fund, so I have, I've gone back and shown records back through two thousand nineteen and twenty. It looks like at the beginning of your nineteen twenty year, you had a beginning balance of about five grand. It looks like you're receiving right around thirty to forty thousand dollars, depending on the year, for your lease payments. And then most of your expenses are coming in the form of utilities. Looks like you have some minor facility maintenance and other professional services that are coming out of there. So in nineteen twenty, resources, which includes beginning balance and revenue, a forty-one grand, expenses of forty grand. So that left about four or five hundred dollars left in that fund at the end of the, that fiscal year. In twenty-twenty-one, that five hundred dollars rolls over your resources and expenses. At the end of the year, you had about sixty-three hundred dollars. That rolled into twenty-one, twenty-two. Sorry, I know you're. And then in twenty-one, twenty-two, it looks like between resources and expenses, you're going to roll over just under twelve thousand dollars. And so that's what's used in, eleven thousand dollars is what's used in this proposed budget as the beginning balance. I budgeted thirty thousand dollars for lease revenue, just based on the history of the previous few years. And then did my best to kind of estimate what your utilities would be.
Okay. It just seems, seemed lower than I was, my mind was thinking it was.
Well, I think, and then I know Cindy is also dying to add something here too. But I do think in some of the past budgets, and I will, I'll go back and look at this too. I do think some of the pass-through grants and other things were also included in the community.
Maybe that's why.
So I think that also might look a little bit different. And then Cindy, was there something you wanted to add?
Thank you.
Any other questions on the special revenue funds? All right, so we'll move to system development charges or SDC funds. So these are fees that are paid by developers and some homeowners for building permits, anything for building, I'm not going to even dive into Blair's world there. But it's fees that development pays for. And the intention is that growth helps pace for, or growth. So increases in your sewer pipe size, new developments that have to build out your systems for water sewer or storm, anything like that. And I'm sure Blair could give you a whole, probably two-day seminar on SDCs and what they are. So one thing to note that I do specifically, and I've, I've done this in my previous positions, back about probably five or six years ago, when I was an accountant at a city, we had done a budget and it came to the end of the year. We had updated a master plan. We found out that some of our projects were SDC eligible when we thought they originally weren't. So there was an opportunity, if we had appropriated funds, to recover some of the costs that say our water fund paid for, that SDCs could have paid for. Because we didn't have those funds appropriated, we couldn't use them in time. And we couldn't get a public hearing in time for the end of the fiscal year to be able to make a supplemental budget change. So my finance director at that city at the time said, from now on, we're appropriating everything in SDF, SDC funds, just in case something comes up throughout the year. It doesn't mean that we are budgeting to spend one hundred percent of the funds this next year. So that is why you see everything in operations or that's been appropriated. It is there to make sure that when Blair or your public works director comes in and says, hey, we've got this development that just came up and, or this project that we found out is SDC eligible so that we can definitely use those funds to help pay for some of those projects if and when those times come up. Sometimes there's a grant that comes up that requires matching. You can use SDC funds for those. Any kind of master plans that you guys do in the future, you can use SDC funds for. So I typically in my past and my entire past have always tried to appropriate SDC funds at a hundred percent just in case things come up.
As part of our SDC process, if we do determine any capital projects that we want SDCs to go towards, we would need to decide as a council and go ahead and publicly announce those as well. So that would be something to, I think for us to discuss at the council retreat. SDCs are, I'm very happy to see that they're doing as well as they are. SDCs are one of those things that often can show the health of a city and is often very encouraging to developers that are looking to invest in the city, that are larger developers, since SDCs go to supporting the infrastructure and therefore sort of the functional health of the city. So we have, it's nice to see them getting, becoming available. And I think in our council retreat, we could discuss what direction we want those SDCs to go into and what projects we want them to be a part of as we're moving forward.
Any questions on SDCs?
Madam Mayor, if I may. In the history that we've had for the last twenty years or something, if, I believe, in my opinion, that if we had been at the same rate that we are today with SDCs, we probably wouldn't be borrowing a bunch of money to do things that we, we would like to have had done. Now we're in a position where we don't have that option. And so I think, I think it's, it's really a positive thing and there's all kinds of benefits. You look at the lists of things that can be helped with that and the rest of us pay it. Nine, ten thousand of us pay all of those, those costs for stuff that is done in the water and then wastewater and then whatever. So I, I just think it's a benefit, a big benefit for us. Anyway, that's just my point.
Okay, we'll move on to the next. Enterprise funds. So this is the one area government where you get to act like a business. Enterprise funds are specifically set up by statute and ORS standards to essentially be self-sustainable. So that is why you have a water sewer and a storm fund. Their intention is to create your own bucket of revenue and expenses and be self-sufficient in operating. Before in previous budgets, you had a water fund, a water depreciation fund, a water SDC reserve fund. You had a water capital fund. And so we've taken a few of those, the SDC funds, obviously we've broken out into SDC funds. But your capital depreciation and your water fund, we've all combined them into one fund. There's no reason, specific reason that I can see that you would need them separated. You're the first city that I've seen that has them separated. So for the ease of transparency and to stop transfers from going here and there and confusing people, combining them all into one fund is obviously simpler and it's more transparent, we believe, for your city, your staff and your community. So like I said, you have your water sewer, your storm. Each one of those funds has capital outlay projects that have been identified by Kelsey, your public works director and Blair to make sure that we've appropriated enough funds for those capital projects moving forward for this fiscal year to get you through June thirty. And I'm happy to answer any questions or go into any details that you would like. No questions are good questions. So, okay.
Can, can I add one clarification that nobody may really care about besides me, but it makes me really happy? This also shows the seven million dollars for the wastewater treatment plant. This is all in here now and, and all of that is accounted for as well as the projects and the way that we're planning on spending that. So just so you're aware.
All right. And my last slide is the internal services fund. So you have two internal service funds that were in previous budgets and so we've kept those. One is your economic development fund. Blair was pretty adamant that we need to keep that and so obliged and, and happy to keep that so that he can continue doing his work the best to his ability. You also have a reserve account set up that is kind of a general reserve account. Most of the funds in there come originally from public works. So typically if you save them from public works, you want to spend them on public works. But you have the option as a council to make a decision if you choose not to and you want to spend that on something else. You separate it from the water sewer and storm fund specifically in this fund to reserve money for whatever you see fit as a council. So the reserve fund, everything is placed into contingency funds. So it's appropriated to spend, but not in any specific category. Any questions about the internal service funds?
Any more questions regarding the budget or anything along these lines we can answer? Matt and I are ready, so bring it on.
I, I should note because it's a question that came up earlier today regarding the resolution and how it's formatted. In my previous positions, ORS standards are to include specific categories within each fund. Personnel services, materials and services, debt service, capital outlay, contingency, unappropriated. And those are specifically set to be in those resolutions. In the past, I have received authorization from auditors and the state of Oregon to combine materials, services, personnel services and capital outlay into what I call operations. What this does is it allows us to combine those three categories into one appropriation so that it allows the flexibility for staff in the council to move money from personnel services to materials and services in case something changes in the, within the fiscal year and we need to move money around. Say a position isn't filled and so, oh, hey, we have professional services to pay for because we didn't fill that position. We had to hire a contractor. So instead of having to do a whole supplemental budget process in time for the fiscal year, we're allowed to move those within that structure. It's still only spending what is appropriated and not touching anything in the unappropriate or contingency funds. These are funds that are already appropriated and just allows us more flexibility to move around. That's all I had.
That's all. Thank you for that staff report. We're still in public hearings. So the next part of that is public comment. The floor is open for public comment. Those who testify must be recognized by myself. Be on a microphone and state your full name and address for the record. No one shall be disorderly, disruptive or abusive during the hearing. Testimony must be relevant. Redundancy or repetition is to be avoided. Does anybody from the public want to come and speak to this? Okay, moving on, I'm going to close this public hearing at seven seventeen. Do we have further discussion by the council? I just, I want to say thank you. Reviewing a budget that has fewer funds does make it clearer and easier to read. I know where everything's at. I also want to thank you for answering the multiple questions that I had emailed to you and providing this summary of what the changes are involved. That was very helpful. Moving on from there, I need a decision from council.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Julie, roll call please.
Counselor Trask.
Nice try. Yes. You adopted, yes. There it is, Julie, yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Counselor Thorsett.
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Mahler?
Yes.
Okay, we have seven nyes and no nays. Moving on, department head presentation reports, please.
Thank you. And we're going to start with our library director. Daisy.
So I'm giving out lots of numbers here. Feel free to ask questions along the way. I'm not going to tell you all the numbers. They're mostly in some of the slides. Just going to highlight a few things to try to keep this somewhat short, otherwise I could be here talking for hours. That's how I roll. So summer reading, hopefully Adam falls along. All of our funding for all of our programs, including summer reading, comes from our friends at the library. This year, we, or last year, we did mostly art in the park and drop-in games and crafts for teens. And we had pretty good turnout. We're still a little bit low from our pre-COVID numbers, but we're getting better. And this coming summer, we're planning on doing a lot more. We have a lot more funding to do that as well. Storytime. Started doing storytimes again during summer reading. And we had a nice pinch hitter of coming in and doing one of our storytimes when. nice pinch hitter of coming in and doing one of our storytimes when Joy got sick. So, that was great. And then, we've been doing a lot better. Every storytime, we're averaging about sixteen kids per storytime. One time, we had twenty-five, and that was way too many for our tiny space. But we're doing very good with that, with our programs. We have a lot of new programs in the last year. We're recognizing the kids that want to be recognized for their first library. We started Library Card, started A Thousand Books Before Kidergarten, which is encouraging kids to read. A lot of crafts and coloring sheets. We're going to do the Community Reads three times a year, which is great community involvement. We're getting teens to come back to the library. It's amazing how many did not know that we existed, and now, we're there, and we're giving them a safe space by having games and everything in the afternoon. We've had some local author signings, which we're working on getting some more local authors, so if you know any, just send them my way. Our dinosaurs. So, in the, a community survey done prior to my time here, one of the comments from a community member, who I assume was under ten years old, was that we needed more dinosaurs in the library. So, this was a perfect opportunity to work with UO's Museum of Natural and Cultural History, or one of the first libraries in the state to premiere their Oregon's Dino's Story Program, which is traveling around the state and teaching all about how dinosaurs were in Oregon and just dinosaurs in general. They've all changed names since I was a kid, so I don't know any of the dinosaurs anymore, I think. It was a great partnership, because we were one of the first ones. They came and did a program for us, and all of that was free, and we definitely got more dinosaurs in the library. Our volunteers. So, we had about, what about five hundred and twenty-eight hours of volunteer time donated to the library. This is when volunteers actually remembered to write down their hours, so I'm sure it was far more. And this also does not include all of the time that the Friends of the Library have donated on our behalf. So, running the bookstore, helping with some of the programs, that is thousands of hours on their part as well. And they do all sorts of work for us. And one of the volunteers in this really just wanted her picture be reading. She didn't want to be shown working for some reason. She does work. Some of our more exciting numbers, I think, because, again, I'm a numbers nerd, too. So, circulation. We increased our checkouts thirty-five percent over this last year. We believe part of that was to some new collections we added, but also the fact that we're fine-free. I've seen and heard a lot of people saying, "I haven't been here for five or ten years. I was afraid of the fines I had." They're coming back now. They're renewing their cards, and they are definitely using the library a lot more. And part of that, you can see in our new library cards issued. Last year, we did six hundred and six new library cards, which is about double even our pre-COVID numbers. We're also increasing the amount of items that we share with other Lynn libraries. We're now borrowing and sharing about the same number. It used to be, we borrow about twice of what we shared back. So, we are definitely sharing with the whole county. Technology. This one's not as exciting, because we have a lot of things we need to change in the next year, but we did have a lot of computer logins for our six little computers, a very high use of our children's computers, and we have loaned out a lot of eBooks and e-audio books, which, surprising to me, went up this last year, even over the COVID numbers when everyone was stuck home. They're still actually increasing. Collections. We've added some fun things. We now have museum and wilderness passes that you can check out to visit the UO's cultural, natural and cultural history, some of the wilderness areas around here. We're going to be adding Oregon Garden Pass that people can check out in the next month or so. Sorry, that's 2023. We've also added games and puzzles, lots of new titles and books, and then, a lot of TV series as well. So, if you can't stream, or they've taken your favorite show off of the streaming platforms, you can come and check that out from the library. Fun facts about our community. We had over thirty thousand people come through our doors in this last year, which, as you know, is about three visits for every person that lives in the city. I know not everybody visits. I would like to pretend they do, but that means at least people are coming back and coming back through. We checked out over sixty thousand items. We only own thirty thousand items. Not every item goes out. A lot of them go out multiple times, but if you count, that's six items per resident that are being checked out, which is really good numbers for any size town. We have a new Instagram page that started in the last year, and we're doing pretty good on our social media. Just need to find other ways to continue to interact with the community. Last slide, I talk really fast. Some of the challenges that we're facing. The biggest one, I think, is space. We need more space for so many things. We're getting daily requests for meeting space for people in the community. Today, we had someone from DHS there to meet with clients. We need space for that. We're limited in the amount of kids we can really comfortably have for storytime. We never have teens that can come over after school and hang out, and some do read. We'd like to have separate areas for those that want to read and those that just need a safe space to be. We're very limited on some of our collections and how much we can grow. Our children's graphic novel collection, we are at max capacity of what we can fit on our shelves, and every single item that we have has checked out in the last two years. We tend to try to have twenty-five percent of our collection, we assume, is going to be checked out at any time, so we have more items that could actually fit on our shelves, if everything came back. So, hopefully, not everyone returns everything all at the same time. We do have a heavy reliance on volunteers, and with that low staffing, we also have limited hours that we could be open. I'd love to open more hours, especially Friday and Saturday hours, and eventually, maybe add back Monday hours. With the staff level we have right now, we just can't do that. And then, fun thing, if you've noticed in all my pictures, and if you follow us on social media, we have some mascots that have been in most of these pictures, and that's our biggest challenge, is that Baby Yoda and Darth just cause trouble every day. They're always up to something. And the story of that is, somebody left behind the Darth Vader stuffed animal almost exactly a year ago, and never, with news, never claimed. So, he became a city employee, and has been causing trouble in the library ever since. And then, somebody donated Baby Yoda through our book drop a couple months later, so he would have a friend. It's much better than the budget talk we were doing a minute ago. So, that's all I have. I'm happy with any questions.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Have you noticed a more timely return with the fine-free or a less timely return, just out of curiosity?
Actually, people are tended to return stuff a little bit faster. We're having a lot fewer long overdue items still. I think last year, we had twenty-five items completely never be returned, and we'd been around thirty or forty a year before that. So, more things actually are getting returned, and people are returning them a little bit faster, especially movies, for some reason. It tended, like, I just watched this this afternoon. I wanted to get it back for the next person, rather than, I'm going to keep this as long as I can.
So, what I understand you're saying is, our checkout has increased thirty-five percent, but our return has actually, for those that not being returned, has gone down. So, even though we're checking out more, we're actually getting even more back. That's amazing. Thank you. I also really like, just to point out, because I sit on the library board, the fact that other libraries are borrowing from us more than we are borrowing from them. I think that's just really cool. In this county, people come to our library to borrow books, so.
We do have people that even drive from Albany or Lebanon to come to our library to check out materials that we have here.
Madam Mayor, kind of off topic here, but I just want to say, the Baby Yoda was my favorite part of your entire presentation.
Did you see him in all the slides throughout the way? You can visit him at the library anytime, too. He does participate in storytime.
Thank you, Megan. All right, thank you. We're now going to hear from Chief Ogden.
I'm going to try to keep this quick, but I wanted to really share with you all, really, our big wins from last year. The first slide, I have our mission statement, and I think the biggest win for us is, as you all know, we had a challenging year, and we were, you know, down half of our staff. But when you're down half of your staff, and you take a look at this mission statement, to work in partnership with the community, that was so big for us because you recognize your need for the community, you know? The community stepped up big time in helping us solve investigations with video surveillance. I can remember one time, personally, having to go hands-on with somebody that was violent, and a community member actually stepped in to help out. And so, it just, it was amazing. And so, I'm super thankful for that. And also, I mean, obviously, we, you know, want to protect the public and prevent crime, but even though we were half-staffed for a lot of that year, we were still able to provide the highest level of service to our community that we possibly can. As you know, we are a full-service agency. You call us, we will respond to any call, and we did that. We had over ninety-five hundred, ninety-six hundred calls for service last year, and we responded to all of them. And I can say with complete confidence, we provided just high-quality service. With so many new people and a different command staff, different command staff, I just wanted to show you some pictures of what we look like now with our command staff. Obviously, me, and then, we've got our two sergeants and Penny. Go to the telecommunications slide. Another big win here is Penny is on here, and she's alive. As you all know, you know, we honored a couple of our people at the PD for life-saving awards. And so, that was a huge win for us. She went down. Her heart stopped, and we had some people write on it and saved her life. And so, it was awesome. And then, here's our officers. We still have two officers to hire, and you notice that the captain is not in there. We've got myself and the two sergeants. So, right now, the captain process is open. It closes at the end of the month, and so, hopefully, sometime in the next couple of months, we will have a captain to add in there, which, then, that will do some shifting around, and we'll have another, someone else put in for sergeant, and kind of go from there. Our detective and SRO is Jeff Hamlin, and then, our Community Service Officer, Sean Morgan. And so, that's everyone that we have. And so, here's the 2022 wins. We hired six officers, or about six officers, last year, which is huge, because there's a lot of time and effort that goes into background investigations and just getting somebody on. I mean, you've got the background investigation, you've got the, having to pass the medical, having to pass the written tests, and then, you've got the psychological examination. And so, it is a really time-consuming, long process, because, you know, we want to hire the best candidates that we can possibly find. So, we did six of those last year, and I'm super proud of our agency for, you know, onboarding all of those people. We've had three life-saving awards, which was huge. You all heard about those this last year, so that was big. The K-9 program, another huge win. Even though Gemma is, was retired at the end of August, we recognized that we needed to pivot based on Measure 110 and the drug laws. And so, we have done our research. We are going to implement a patrol K-9, and probably, the next council session, I'll come with you, come to you with an RCA for, we've identified three different organizations where we can purchase that K-9 from, and we'll, I'm excited to present that to all of you next time. Last year, another big win for us was a detective. We were without a detective for a year and a half or so, and that is huge for us. We were just so short, we couldn't, we, our detective went back to the road to handle calls for service. Brought the detective back, which really offloaded a lot of follow-up in some of those significant investigations that are very time-consuming. So, we were able to take those off of patrol, put those onto the detective, and he's doing a great job. So, that was, that was huge for us. We also did a complete evidence audit. We tried to do that once a year, and last year, I sat down with Sean Morgan, and we went through our evidence, and everything came out perfect, and everything was accounted for. So, that's a huge win. Another big one for us, we don't get many armed robberies, and we had, I mean, we had one last year, and, you know, it's kind of shocking when we do get that, but it was great because we were able to solve that within eighteen hours. And if I understand correctly, I've heard that this person is already on his way to prison for five years. So, I mean, that was pretty fast. The whole process was pretty fast. Another huge win is just working closely with FAC to solve our homelessness issue. I have to give kudos to Sean Morgan for shouldering a lot of that. There was just a lot of communication, a lot of interaction with our homeless community, and without Sean, I, we just, I don't know what I would do. And so, that's a huge win, because, as you know, where we're at right now, FAC has opened up, and if you've seen the old City Hall area, it is looking great. And so, I just consider that a big one. And then, last of all, we've got a new chief, and I absolutely love my job. I'm so thankful to be here and to just share all of these huge wins. And I totally, I really look forward to the future and making a positive impact on the community, on our department, and I love my job. There you have it.
Awesome. Thank you. Any questions? Okay, we'll keep going. All right. So, Director Springman wasn't able to join us tonight, so I'm going to be trying to give this presentation for him. So, I know I'm going to miss quite a bit, so please forgive me, but I am definitely able to give some kudos to the Public Works Department. They have been doing some tremendous work. So, some of the, well, and then, also, just if you go one above, back in the one we are, while we do need to update this, this is a beautiful picture of our wastewater treatment plant. I mean, we really do have a beautiful location for a wastewater treatment plant, and once we have fully updated that, we'll be giving out tours, and people will be going to lunch there. So, but in the meantime, we have, Public Works has been working on the facility design for that. They're in the process of finalizing the water and storm master, storm water master plans. I think those are supposed to be done sometime early spring to midsummer. The small diameter water main replacement project, I believe, is about ready to go. And then, the water treatment plant projects have had multiple projects, and Director Springman has been updating you all on all of this, but we'll just remind you a little bit of the backwash and VFD upgrades. Not even one hundred percent sure what that is. I know what the backwash is, but the raw water control valve replacement, that one was one that you all disapproved recently, and that will make a big difference. We're working on the SCADA automation, and that's also going to be phenomenal, to be able to have all of that automated. And then, the fluoride system replacement, this has been a big question. That one's almost complete. So, they'll be coming and talking about that pretty soon. Let's see. So, the water meter modernization project is almost also complete. I think there's just a few more water meters that are going out there. And then, the Pleasant Valley Bridge repairs. The Northside Dog Park is open and operational, and a few times I've been out there, too. There's, I've seen multiple dogs out there, and they'll be coming back with Angela and Ted on doing the whole Arbor Day celebration. So, want to invite all of you to that, so that'll be pretty fun as well. And then, of course, then, very instrumental with the FAC facility improvements and all City Hall restoration projects as well. And we'll talk about that a little bit more, too. So, we've So we've been very happy, I mean, Public Works has been working a lot. You'll see them all out there at all times for all types of projects. So big kudos to them. Any questions? Okay. All right, I'm going to hand it over to Director Larson then.
All right, thank you. So we've had a lot of turnover in my department and KED, Community Economic Development, and so wanted to give kind of an overview of both what our department does because it's kind of a mixture of a lot of things and then also the staff that we have working here. So first off, talking about planning. Development starts with planning. It starts with determining the uses and the density permitted in various zones and guiding property owners through that process. Angela Clegg is our associate planner. She does a fantastic job. If I'm Picard, then Angela is Riker. She's my right hand, keeps me on track. She's also been pretty instrumental in obtaining significant grant funding for the city, most notably our recent Sankey Park improvements. And then we also utilize her knowledge of plants and nature and experience from her previous work at the Watership Council. Critically, of course, our 80s pop culture references come from her as well. The building department, once you have planning approval for a, for a development, building is the next step. Getting all the building permits in order and working with our third-party Building Inspector Service. Adam has moved on to a new position here as the Communications Manager because obviously in KED, we didn't have enough challenges for him anymore. He mastered it. And so he's moved on, but we recently hired Brandon Horton. He's busy learning the ropes and he's got a wide variety of experience that he's eager to add to, some of which is just really fascinating to talk about. If you really want an interesting conversation, ask him about mushroom cultivation and he'll talk your ear off. So moving on, engineering. When you have a development, often city infrastructure is a huge part of that. And Joe Grable, our staff engineer, has been instrumental in that for many years. And now after over 26 years with the city, Joe is retiring and his last day will be in mid-February. His expertise and knowledge will be greatly missed and we just can't say enough about how much that's going to hurt. And so we recently hired Ryan Wade. We are fortunate in that we have been able to work out some overlap, which is rare in a city of our size. And Ryan started two weeks ago. He's busily absorbing as much as he can. He has some great skills with GIS and he's also a retired Marine. So we are very glad to have his skills. He's already proven to be a great asset with some of our GIS system. Code compliance, this is, this is going to be a topic later tonight as well, but once you have things already built, we got to encourage people to keep them orderly and clean. Most common problems that we have with code compliance are tall grass and weeds, occupied RVs, and open storage of items, mostly junk. Ethan Rowe is our code compliance officer. He deals with more messes than anyone I know. And I, there are people who either love him or hate him from the public depending on what he's talking to them about. And so in our department, we try to give him as much support as possible because he's usually not getting it with, from the people that he's talking to. But he does do a great job of educating the public on what our code is and why, and working with them to correct problems. Our, first off, our goal is always to get compliance and we're not concerned so much about finding people, but we just want, we just want people to clean up their stuff, basically. Finally, that brings us on to economic development. Yes, I do aspire to be Ron Swanson, my favorite character for Parks and Rec. Economic development, I just didn't want to put a picture of myself out there. It's awkward to do a presentation with a picture of yourself. Economic development has lots of definitions, but it can be characterized as the economic improvement of the community and its residents. And this can happen by attracting or developing new businesses, but can also involve attracting more tourism or making the community a more desirable place to live. So that's my job and I do the best I can to interface with the businesses that we have in town and to attract additional businesses and work with property owners to make their properties a more desirable place for new businesses to be. My favorite things to think about are downtown Quarry Park and Foster Lake Station, which if I haven't mentioned to you before, ask me about it sometime, it's a really cool idea. So 2022 highlights, it wasn't us, but we're really excited that the Will Emmett Warehouser Mill Site is in private hands and not in county hands anymore. And we are continuing to work with the new owner to, on plans to develop that further. It's, it, there still are some major milestones that we're looking forward to, but it's well on its way toward those, namely getting a no further action order that covers the entire property. But the last time I talked to DEQ, that was quite imminent. So on their timeline, that means the next year, but I think it might be in the next six. We did adopt a streetscape plan that's already kind of shaping what we're, what we're looking at project-wise for downtown. We have a new development code. It is clear and more transparent and easier to work with, and we already have some changes that we want to make. We've just identified some issues that when you adopt anything like this, there are undoubtedly things that you miss. And so we will be, we are working with the Planning Commission to make some, to correct some issues that we found. But just to put it in, in perspective, a portion of this code we adopted early in 2021, it was regulations specifically targeting manufactured homes. And what we had, the problems that we had had is there were a number of older, older manufactured homes that were being placed that we didn't have any code that really allowed us to do anything about it. And so you had homes that were on their second or third life getting placed on a new property. And depending, most often unfortunately with those homes is when you move them the second or third time, there's issues. And so we tightened up the code. What that actually resulted in is a decrease in permits in manufactured homes being placed from 16 in 2021 to 2 in 2022. Now, normally I would not be excited about telling you about a drop in housing, but in that case, it, it was replaced by more improved quality in housing. And the in-building activity that we did see in 2022 has been a huge increase in quality. So we've had a lot of that activity. We had 36 single-family homes built in 2022. That is the highest in five years. And so we're, we're quite pleased about that. If you have a chance to drive through the Mountain River subdivision that's at 45th and Main, that subdivision pretty much popped up all last year. It didn't exist before. We also have two major healthcare facilities that are well underway with their construction. And then people are happy about a new restaurant in town. With our grant-funded projects, we completed our streetscape plan that was partially grant-funded, but we completed the improvements in Sankey Park, which was also grant-funded. In process, we had a grant for a housing needs analysis that will be coming to you in the next month or so. The Planning Commission is going to have, it just, just made their final recommendation for adoption at their last meeting. And then we're in process for our, an update to our transportation system plan, which is also grant-funded. And then we obtained grants last year for a park system master plan update and for the downtown EV charging station, both of which we've put out requests for proposals for consultants to complete that work. So, that's KED.
Madam Mayor, may I ask a question? Okay, I'm, I think it's awesome that we have 36 single-family homes. I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but do you know how many units are in the new apartment complexes and are there any more homes being developed in the future that you know of?
So in the apartment complex that have recent, the apartment buildings that have recently been completed, they're, they're both on Long Street. The one that was done first, I believe that was in 2020 when it was completed or 2021. That one has 48 units, the one that's at Mountain View and Long. And then the one that's further east on Long Street has 40 units. That one that's further east, I believe is, there's, there are, they did previously submit plans for a second phase that would be, I think, double the units that they already put in. They've had some ideas for a second phase, it would be another 80 units, but I believe they are selling the property. And so it's in flux as to whether that will continue. I suspect that eventually a buyer will take those plans and, and run with them, but it may take a little while because multifamily doesn't happen overnight. As for more homes being built, we do have, there are some lots in that Mountain Rivers, like three lots I think that are still available. Two? Okay, two. And, and there are some, some empty lots throughout the city that are available for building. We have seen though, a, it is clear that the, that the interest rate increases that the Fed is doing have had a result, have had an impact on, on home construction. And so we have seen a, things slowing down. They haven't stopped, but there, we're definitely not going to come anywhere close to last year in 2023. And so we, we haven't seen a lot of, of new single-family homes this year so far.
Not that that's good or bad, but it just gives us a little bit more time to get some of the things in our ducks in a row before they start building again. So thank you.
Exactly, everything in perspective.
Any other questions of council? Thank you, department heads. We appreciate that update and congratulations on all the big wins. Now we have one more.
Final, final piece here. So we just want to go over key points with our employees and things like that. For example, go ahead and go to the next slide. We had a staff meeting last week, I believe, and so we were able to celebrate our, and recognize our employees for their years of service. So we had quite a few who have now celebrated one year of service. Now, some of them have actually been here longer than this, but we were going by, just trying to make sure that everybody was included. So we have Hunter Baxter, Megan Daisy, Sean Hagy, Adam Lessinger, Christopher Patton, Ben Penigar, Tyler Rucker, Trevor Sunquist, and Tyler Robinson. So it's been a great list and it was really fun to get to kind of meet with everybody and, and celebrate that as well. Then for five years of service, we had Director Greg Springman and Diane Golden from the library. And then 10 years of service, we had Julie Fisher, Jeff Hamlin, David Hickox, and Don Sullivan. Then for 20 years of service, we had Ryan Cummings. So it was really nice to be able to kind of see who's been with us for a long time and that's, that says a lot too, both about the community and our, and our team members. Also want to do a little plug for Sean Morgan. And we're actually going to ask FAC to come and join us next council meeting and we're hoping to do a little bit more for this. But Sean Morgan received the Police Employee of the Year Award for his service on working with the community and just everything that he's been doing. Because besides FAC, he's been also doing various traffic reports and, and working with other community members. And he's just, he's, when I started here, I hadn't even met Sean and I would be asking a question like, what's going on with the traffic over here? Or how many people are coming through? Or what's the issue with this or what's happening there? And everybody'd be like, oh, we'll have Sean get back to you. And for about three weeks, I was very curious about this mythical Sean Morgan who seemed to do all things. And then I met him and he really is as incredible as it sounded. So it was really great to see him honored in this way. So we wanted to share this as well. Chief Ogden also was able to present the pins for the life-saving award. And as you all know, I mean, it's amazing that we had three life-saving awards this year and it really speaks to the dedication of our officers and it's, it's really, really incredible. So it also speaks a fair amount to our new chief in the way that he is working on recognizing his team and his officers as well. So just wanted to mention that. And that was it. All right, so that ends all of our big wins and highlights for the last year. So if you all have any other questions, please let us know and otherwise, we know it's getting late and we'll kind of keep on going.
Any questions? No? Okay. Let's move on. The next thing on the agenda is request for council action, security services contract for the FAC.
Okay, so as you're no doubt aware, the FAC site opened and as part of our memorandum of understanding that was approved last year with them, the city is to take on overnight security for that facility. And so we put out a request for proposals for firms to do that work and we received two responses. And the, the high scorer from the, from the committee that reviewed those responses was this one from Nighthawk, I believe they're called. And so this is the contract that we have negotiated with them, it's for, for your review. There are two different options. Originally, we, in our RFP, we asked for a security officer that could, a security guard that could be stationed at the FAC site, but also patrol to other city sites and provide security there as well. That is a more expensive option because it requires a vehicle for that security guard and just the added cost of upkeep for that vehicle. At the same ti, and then we also wanted to make sure we got some information on what it would cost to do the work without the vehicle, if the employee just goes to the FAC site and stays there and doesn't have to go around on patrol. Obviously, that's less expensive, but it also works out better for FAC to have that situation where the, the security guard is there for the entire time. And so those are both available for you to review here. Staff in reviewing the contracts, staff is recommending the, the option of the no-car security guard mainly because it meets FAC's needs better, but also is a more of a cost savings to the city. And so the, the option with the vehicle would be $7,920 per month. The, without the vehicle, it's just an hourly cost for the officer, which is $24, I believe, 24 and some change, which works out to about $6,700 a month.
Any questions of council?
Madam Mayor, may I ask some questions? Okay, so is this a contract for like a monthly contract, an annual contract, a ongoing forever type of contract or?
We have, we have negotiated a month-to-month contract with the firm and this, this, this pricing is good for the, the first year of the month-to-month contract. And so that allows us to, with 30 days' notice, or possibly less depending on the time of the month, to completely change providers if necessary.
Okay, I have another one if that's okay. So if we were to have a police officer say instead of a security guard, is there a way to figure out the price difference between the two? If this would save us money or if we would hire?
The problem with the, they're not quite apples to apples. If we, even with an additional police officer, that police officer is not necessarily going to be on-site for the full shift. A police officer patrols the entire city, doesn't typically stay in one spot doing security at one site.
If I could add to that as well, a police officer, even an entry-level officer, costs about $49 per hour versus the $24 per hour because the police officer does have much more extensive duties than the security officer does. So this would, if you were to try to compare apples to apples, this would also save us money on that end as well.
And then lastly, the recommendation I think I hear you saying is for a security officer fixed at that location, all hours of the night from 7:00 to 10:00 or 10:00 to 7:00?
10:00 PM.
Indefinitely? Not moving around?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of council? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll second that.
Okay. I have a motion for the recommended, which would be option three, correct? And a second? And I need a roll call, please?
It's number two. That's what I thought.
Okay. Good to, no, that's good to know. So the motion is for option number two. And Council Trask, your second is for that as well?
Yes.
Okay. And go ahead, Julie, with the roll call.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yeah.
Counselor Thorsted?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Mahler?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Sorry, six ayes and one nay. Moving on to the next item on the agenda. Ordinances and Bills. Request for council action, ordinance number four for 2023, code updates.
Back to me for this. So in working with Ethan Rowe, our code compliance officer, we've identified some areas of the code that affect his work that we'd like to make some changes to, to help make him more effective. And these are contained in this ordinance. I'll go briefly over the, over the changes. And then if you have questions, I'm happy to take those. The first is to a change to section 8.04.020, nuisances affecting public health. There were references to debris or junk property in that section. And as they're not as, as affecting of public health as the other items in there, those were moved to open storage, which I'll cover later. Section 8.04.025, open burning. We've clarified this section to make it clear that authorized individuals have the right to extinguish illegal open burning and that the violator will bear the costs of such enforcement. Section 8.04.060, we've updated this section. It covers glass windows and doors at the bottom six feet of a structure. And our thought was that, you know, that doesn't really stop people from causing a problem in a property. And so we'd like to get rid of the, the six-foot restriction and have it just be windows and doors in general, regardless of whether they're glass or not. If they're broken open, that should be an issue. Section 8.04.130, this is open storage. We're updating it to allow for the enforcement of open storage that is in public view from an alleyway or private street or shared driveway, as well as open storage in commercial and industrial areas. Right now, the code specifies that the open storage has to be viewable from a public street, not alley. And what that, the effect that that has is that certain areas that back up to an alley, even though there's still a problem and, and the public travels along that alley, then it, there's not anything that we can do to enforce that open storage. At the same time, we have some shared driveways and we have some private roads that are nonetheless well-used by the residents and the residents want us to enforce open storage, but because they're not on a public street or in view from that, we can't actually enforce. Specifically, this would cover like a trailer park that has a private drive going through it, that if you can't see it from the public right-of-way, we can't do anything about it. But those residents of the trailer park still contact us wanting to know why their neighbors are allowed to be a mess. And so this correction would allow us to, to cover those areas as well. Section 12.12.130, we're updating that to, it has to do with parks. Right now, it says the city manager or director can enforce code provisions regarding domestic animals in parks. We want to just change that to designate so that any designated city employee can enforce that section. Section 12.16.110, this is, this has to do with dangerous trees. We're adding some language that allows the city at its discretion to require the input of a licensed arborist for the abatement of dead, dangerous, or diseased trees on private property. Sometimes a tree that is a danger is quite obvious and staff would like to, you know, can enforce that. Other times, we have a neighbor telling us that there's a code violation of a, of a tree that's a problem and we're not experts. Despite the good work that our code compliance officer does, he is not an arborist. And so it, it basically puts one resident's word against another and they want to know why the city won't do anything. Essentially, what this would do is, is we basically could have some additional language and we can essentially tell the complainant that, look, we don't see anything wrong with it, but if you want to provide us with a report from an arborist that we can rely on and have some real data here, then we'd be happy to add that to our code and code compliance efforts. And I believe that covers all of the changes that we're requesting. So I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Any questions of council?
Madam Mayor, may I?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm just going to go over a little story about a little trailer that I own that has open storage issues. And it is a single woman who's disabled on a fixed income. And I'm not quite sure what you would suggest for her or anybody in that situation to do to possibly cover that in a carport when there's lack of space or lack of resources to comply with this update.
So open storage is things that are stored outside that are typically unsightly. Things that you can do to, to make open storage no longer open storage is put it behind a sight obscuring fence of some kind or some kind of barrier. Now, for example, if you have a, suppose you had a front porch that had an underneath portion and you were sticking items underneath that porch, you could put a lattice work in front of that porch that would obscure it and then it would no longer count as open storage. In the case of a carport, if there were, was some sort of sight obscuring part added to the structure, then it would conceal that from view and it would no longer qualify as open storage. Now, obviously, those, those would involve improvements to the property, but it's, the question is, at what point do we require property owners to improve their properties to make them more appropriate for the neighborhood and better for their neighbors? And at what point do we allow a condition to continue? Obviously, that's, that's what we're here for. We'd like to have direction from the council on what, what you think is appropriate. But we do need to have code that our, our staff can respond with. At the same time, we do have people asking for things to be enforced and they make good points about things being unsightly and wanting, wanting them to be improved because it is a quality of life issue for many people in Sweet Home.
So I'm not opposed to that. Oh, my body just totally died because I've been talking so much.
I'm not opposed to that, but for certain circumstances, it's a real barrier to comply. And so I just want to see what is acceptable if we do move forward in this and that wouldn't need some sort of permit or, you know, would up a tarp, a lattice, so whatever. Because in particular, my little piece of property is so tiny, there isn't any actual room. And because she's going to be facing amputation, I mean, it's very difficult just for her in particular. So there are certain people in the community that also have things that make it hard. I, I realize that we want it to be tidy, but sometimes there's barriers that people have that we don't even recognize or realize, so.
And, and I will say that our, our code compliance officer does, in, in as much as he is able, tries to make, be accommodating when it comes to giving warnings and connecting people with assistance that may be helpful. In particular, we're always looking for any organizations that, that assists either the elderly or disabled or those who don't have the ability to, to make changes to their property, to connect them with volunteers and folks who can help out. And we, I guess this is as good a time as any. We continue to ask anyone in the community who would like to be of assistance, we can provide your name to, to such people to, to make sure they have the assistance that they need.
If there are resources to help people get into compliance, I think that that's a really necessary thing rather than just a heavy hand. So that's all. Thank you.
And like I've said, compliance is really our goal. We don't, we don't want to beat people up. We just want it to look better.
Any other questions of council? I will entertain a motion.
I second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Further discussion? Julie, roll call, please. To first reading.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Counselor Thorsted?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Mahler?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
I have seven ayes and no nays for, to move it to first reading, please?
Ordinance Bill number four for 2023, ordinance number blank, Sweet Home Ordinance, amending various sections of the Sweet Home Municipal Code. Whereas periodically updates to the Sweet Home Municipal Code are necessary to address citizen complaints and protect the health, safety, and general welfare of the public. Now, therefore, the city of Sweet Home does ordain as follows. Section one, SHMC, section 8.04.020B is amended to read as follows. B, garbage. No person shall leave rubbish, garbage, trash, manure, or refuse located on property or sidewalks abutting thereon and which has not been removed within a reasonable time and which adversely affects or is detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of the public. Section two, SHMC, section 8.04.025C is amended to read as follows. C, the fire chief or his or her designate or a police officer or Sweet Home Municipal Code Enforcement Officer is authorized to enforce this section under Sweet Home Municipal Code, chapter 9.36 pertaining to violations and any abatement or enforcement procedures. In addition to any other remedy, after requesting that a fire be extinguished by persons present, if any, the above-named individuals can proceed to extinguish the fire if his or her request is not complied with. Fires deemed by the Sweet Home Fire District to be dangerous to human life or property may be extinguished without warning to the violator. The cost of any enforcement, abatement, or firefighting efforts shall be borne by the person in charge of the property as prescribed by this chapter with the notice and hearing being after the abatement. Section three, SHMC, section 8.04.060, glass openings is renamed doors and windows and amended to read as follows. No person shall allow a window or door in a structure to be left broken for more than 48 hours. Section five, SHMC, section 8.04.130, open storage at residence is renamed open storage and is amended to read as follows. A, for the purposes of this section, open storage is defined as the accumulation of property for use when needed or later, or for disposal in an area that is exposed to view from a public or private street, road, shared driveway, or alley. Unless otherwise stated in this chapter, items stored behind a solid or sight obscuring fence that is at least six feet tall are not considered open storage. B, no person shall leave debris, junk, debris or junk anywhere within view of a public or private street, road, shared driveway, or alley on the property or sidewalks abutting thereon. C, no person shall leave fuel, leave oil, fuel, chemical barrels, or similar containers exposed to public view from a public or private street, road, shared driveway, or alley for a period in excess of three days. This section does not prohibit barrels, containers, or tanks attached to a building and used as a reservoir for oil or fuel. D, at residential properties. A, no person shall store parts of vehicles, machinery, or equipment, lumber, plywood, or building materials, buckets, cans, or bottles, truck canopy, bikes, or toys, household furniture, and household furnishings manufactured, built, or designed for inside use out of the elements, and other personal property manufactured, built, or designed for inside use or interior use out of the elements, and personal property that is manufactured, built, or designed for attachment to a structure as shutters, doors, and windows in front or street-side yards at all, or in interior side yards if a backyard is available for storage. Yard for this subsection shall include driveway. B, no person shall store an appliance operable or inoperable or plumbing fixture in view of a public or private street, shared driveway, or road, shared driveway, or alley. C, no person shall leave a burn barrel exposed to public view from a public or private street, road, shared driveway, or alley when burn season is closed. D, no person shall store lumber, plywood, or building materials in view of a public or private street, road, shared driveway, or alley unless each type of item is stacked in a uniform formation one upon another with edges flushed. E, no person shall leave accumulations of limbs, branches, and/or brush on property for longer than one entire burn season that can be seen from a public or private street, road, shared driveway, or alley. This section is in addition to any other provision of this chapter or other city ordinance and not a limit thereon. If other materials are included in the piles and are removed under another provision of the law, then the limbs, branches, and brush can be removed with other, with the other materials per the other provision. F, no person shall park a motor vehicle or utility trailer in the front yard or street-side yard for longer than 72 hours at any one time. Yard for this subsection does not include driveway. Abatement of the motor vehicle or trailer may be accomplished by following the procedures outlined in chapter 10.16 or any amendment thereof for discarded vehicles. E, at commercial properties. A, where permitted under SHMC Title 17, equipment, materials, or merchandise for sale or rent may be displayed in a neat and orderly fashion. Otherwise, any open storage may only take place behind a sight obscuring fence. F, at industrial properties. A, open storage at industrial sites may only take place behind a sight obscuring fence. Section, section six, SHMC, section 12.12.130C and D are amended to read as follows. C, the city manager or designate can require the owner or caretaker of a domestic animal to remove a domestic animal from a park if necessary to prevent interference by the domestic animal with the safety, comfort, or well-being of park visitors or resources. D, no person shall have livestock in a park without first obtaining a permit for said livestock from the city manager or designate. Section, section seven, SHMC, section 12.16.110C is amended to read as follows. C, removal. The city may cause the removal of all or part of any dead, dangerous, or diseased tree located on private property that constitutes a hazard to life or property or harbors insects or, or disease which constitute a potential threat to other trees within the city, or may require the property owner to remove or trim any such tree on private property. At the discretion of the city, a licensed arborist may be consulted regarding the condition of potentially dangerous trees. Failure of the property owner to take corrective action within 30 days after receiving notice by the city is a violation of this chapter. Passed by the council and approved by the mayor this blank day of February 2023. Blank mayor attests, blank city manager, ex officio city reporter.
Moving on to requests for council action. Did this have an emergency clause or is this next one has emergency clause?
So moved.
Thank you. That was a motion for the second reading.
Oh, for this, this, for the next ordinance or, or the second reading of that one that I just read? Okay. So that'll be at the next meeting.
Yes. Moving on for requests for council action, ordinance amendment concerning personal property.
Ordinance Bill number five for 2023. This basically came out of the, as the RCA states, words that I think will be helpful to clean up different areas in the city in the future. Just not specifically what they, like Old City Hall, but all public property type of deal, since it's in the ordinance for that. And that's what it states in the RCA. Basically, the wording comes from the state law that after you clean up an area, you can then discard items that have apparently no value or utility or are in unsatisfactory condition without, I've got without notice and in the public interest. And you can basically throw them away in common English so that people know that's what's probably going to happen to them in most cases if they're in this condition. There's an excuse in the clause because I think it's important to address this and put it in the ordinance as soon as possible because we are dealing with these issues at this time. But that's where, that's where it came from. Those are the words that the state uses. And I think they'd just be helpful in our own ordinance that deals with when the- in our own ordinance that deals with, when the, our, our own ordinance basically deals with a lot of different personal property, how we get it through evidence or through any other process that we have, surplus, it deals in all those issues, found property, that sort of thing. And this would just be an extra way of getting the, disposing of properly these items that have no, no value or utility or, or are in unsanitary condition.
Thank you so much, Mr. Snyder, for that report. I made an error in that I received a motion and a second, and I didn't make a call for a vote. So the motion and the second was to move the last ordinance to the second reading for next meeting. So I need to have a vote on that, and then we're going to discuss the ordinance that Mr. Snyder presented. So I need a roll call, please, Julie.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Mahler.
Yes.
Mayor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Aye.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Thorstedt.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Seven ayes, no nays. And now we can discuss this next ordinance that Mr. Snyder presented. Do we have any questions?
Madam Mayor, is this for, like, immediate disposal if somebody vacates, or is it if somebody is still staying somewhere and you can just throw away whatever is deemed rubbish, or is there some sort of timeframe?
This is, just like you've identified, this would, this would happen, this could happen in both of those situations. That's the idea.
Thank you.
Can I add a little bit to that, too, about how this kind of came about? As we've been doing some of our cleanups and things like Old City Hall, there has been a discussion of, and now that we have moved to the police station, there's also been a discussion of how we will deal with some of those personal items and how we can do so quickly. And so our city attorney has helped us create this to help support some of the direction that I had already given to both our public works team and to our police chief on ways that we could clean these pieces up. We do have a process for if there are items that are considered to have value, where those items are kept for safekeeping. So this would mostly be for those that have been soiled and are considered either... Exactly, exactly. So that's how this came about.
Any other questions, the council?
Madam Mayor, so moved as recommended.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I'll take a roll call, please, Julie.
Counselor.
This is for the first reading.
For the first reading of this ordinance.
Counselor Mahler.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yep.
Counselor Thorstedt.
Yes.
Mayor Coleman.
Yes, we have seven ayes and no nays, and this has an expediency clause, and because of that, I can now entertain a motion to have this ordinance read by title only tonight.
I'm moved.
We need to read it for the first time.
Oh, we need to read it for the first time. I'm really excited to be done with this meeting here. Just moving right along, no.
Ordinance Bill number five for 2023, ordinance number, Sweet Home Ordinance amending SHMC Section 3.08.070 pertaining to unsanitary personal property with expediency clause, whereas the City of Sweet Home is providing a new overflow sleep area that, based on past experience with said areas, has to deal with personal property, items, trash, litter, and debris, and needs regulations as soon as possible to help protect the area users and the public health, safety, and welfare, and therefore, expediency clause is included in this ordinance. Now therefore, the City of Sweet Home does ordain as follows. Section one, Sweet Home Municipal Code, Section 3.08.070, titled hereby to read as Treatment of Dangerous or Perishable Property or Animals or Insanitary Property in, the section is, and in the section is amended by, I'm sorry, and the section is amended by it into subsections A and B, with subsection A being the current wording of the section before this amendment, and section B being created to read as follows. Section B, notwithstanding any other provision of this chapter, any property that has no apparent value or utility or is in an unsanitary condition may be immediately disposed of by the city without notice in such manner as is determined to be in the public interest, including throwing it away. Section two, expediency clause is hereby judged and declared by the city, by the Sweet Home City Council that existing conditions are such that this ordinance is needed to be in effect at the time and date and of its passage by the city council and approved by the mayor, and it is hereby declaring an emergency to promote the public health, safety, and welfare. Passed by the council, approved by the mayor, this blank day of blank, 2023. Mayor test City Manager ex officio City Recorder.
Thank you so much. Thank you also for bringing this forward. I know this will help with the police department. Okay, now I will entertain a motion for a second reading by title only tonight.
I'm moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Vote, please.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yep.
Counselor Thorstedt.
Yes.
Mayor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Mahler.
Yes.
Okay, we have seven ayes and no nays for reading by title ordinance only. Thank you.
Ordinance Bill number five for 2023, ordinance number, Sweet Home Ordinance amending SHMC Section 3.08.070 pertaining to unsanitary personal property and with expediency clause.
Thank you so much.
Madam Mayor, I have a real quick question, if I may.
Yes, you may.
In part B at the bottom, in section, must be section one, it says that we can remove stuff without permission. It's unsanitary, blah, blah, blah. So if we do that, can we, can we make them pay us for that? Does it say it? I didn't see it.
I understand what you're saying. There is a process if it has some value and you've got it. I mean, there's a process there. Mostly, it's, it's, a lot of times, it's return it to the owner, return it to the, you go through a sale process, public auction, that sort of thing, where you can get your, you know, cost back for that. But the items that we're talking in here have no value, and the people that you're dealing with have no money.
Okay, okay. I, I get that, but it seems.
I, I understand. You can put whatever you want down there, that people will be charged for their costs of the cleanup, but right now, the answer is no. You'd have to put that in there. We're going to put in some system that you, you know, it would be, it would be a system much like you have in, in other places where if you are going to do that, it'd be like a, like a lien or something, just to use that word, but there's a system behind that if, before you put it in, or after, after you have a hearing, you have a notice, you have all that sort of thing before somebody would be liable for it.
Madam, may I ask another question?
Yes, you may.
Or make a comment?
Mm-hmm.
If I'm not mistaken, back in the day, we hired a person to mow grass for people, and then they put, I don't know if it was a lien or something, but something, is that not correct?
Correct. What you used to be, like you said, in the day, you used to hire somebody to do that. It's my understanding that that's very, just to answer the example, that example has, they don't do that very often anymore.
Okay, so that does not, that, that, that does not apply?
There's, well.
That, that's abatement, that's code abatement, which, we do code abatement on private properties when there's a certain process followed. This particular, what we're talking about here is, is public areas, right? So we, we don't normally do code abatement on public areas because there's no property owner to, to get the lien on, and, and it's going to be public employees that end up doing the cleanup anyway.
Well, somebody owns the property.
The city does.
We, we do.
Well, okay, so why can't we let them fix it if it's their mess?
What you're talking about is, I understand, I'm not disagreeing with it. I'm just saying you're talking about setting up a process to try to collect money from people that you basically know do not have, which, you know, doesn't mean they can't, doesn't mean in some, somebody couldn't have it in the future, but most of the time with this sort of stuff is that this is just allows you a, an option for coming in and getting it cleaned up, and it's gone. I mean, that's the idea.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a comment with this mess. And I brought this up a few times, and this is really more for the chief. It's just a thought in a discussion we've had that I would like to see some kind of enforcement or some, somehow come together with the shopping carts of Sweet Home, because that is how they're getting this mess to where the, the problem you're faced with. And the shopping carts are of very high value, believe it or not. And to me, if they're pushing the shopping cart down the street, that is theft. And I really like to see somehow we get this enforced, because that's a lot of the problem you're faced with is they're not bringing it one piece at a time by hand to these locations. They're doing it by shopping carts. We've had a tremendous amount of shopping carts straddling around our town, and we've had to deal with them. And so I'd like to see something possible. I think that would control this.
You're absolutely correct. I think we had collected over the last handful of months sixty-plus shopping carts.
An average shopping cart's between seven hundred and fifty to one thousand dollars apiece. That's a true, true story.
So we, I have Sean Morgan working closely with Safeway to see if, we have to have a victim in order to pursue a crime, right? And in the past, they have not been willing to pursue crimes, and so Safeway management is very interested in working with us on exactly that particular issue. Their only roadblock or challenge is going up the corporate ladder to try to convince corporate to, to be, to be a victim. But they, they see the, they see the number of carts that are missing, and they, they're actually communicating to Sean anyway, that, yeah, we're, we're short carts at, at the store, and this is a huge problem. So hopefully, we can get the ball rolling on this and do exactly what we need.
Can I add one more piece, too? This has been a big topic of discussion between all of us as well. And so we are working on bringing forward either a resolution or an ordinance, probably within, I don't know, what'd you say about the next month? Probably within the next month. And we would like to take another look at this and, and see what we can do as a city.
Well, my, my thought is if the corp, the big corporate bosses wouldn't want to partner up with the city and get this enforced, maybe we sell, if they got such big pocketbooks, we send something back to their pocketbooks, and maybe they wake them up and think, well, maybe we want to work with the city and take care of this problem.
So, Madam Mayor, may I just say something? If we're talking about shopping carts, I would love the idea, if this continues to be such a problem, to give an incentive to the stores to have some anti-theft carts to where they don't move around the perimeter any further than just right there at the edge of it. So I think that if we can offer some sort of incentive and give them some sort of timeline of implementation, implementation, I, I would love that idea, anti-theft carts, so.
I agree with Counselor Sanchez on that. Those carts run about twenty-five hundred dollars apiece. So you would think that the grocery stores may look at those because they did, and at the end of the day, would be saving money on the carts.
Okay.
I would hypothesize that if they're using the carts to transport goods to dump on public property and do public dumping, that when you have the conversation with somebody who doesn't want to pursue charges, maybe the conversation could include us billing them for the public dumping. Okay, you clean up.
I think we will definitely look into that. It would be, it'd be nice to have additional ways that we can continue to paper covering the cleanup for our city.
Thank you, councilors, for speaking into this issue. Right now, we can, I can entertain a motion for this ordinance to move to the third reading on February fourteenth.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote.
Counselor Mahler.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yep.
Counselor Thorstedt.
Yes.
Mayor.
Coleman.
Yes, seven ayes, no nays. Moving on to the third reading of ordinance bills. Request for council action, ordinance number one for 2023.
Reading by title only. Ordinance Bill number one for 2023, ordinance number 1307, Sweet Home Ordinance amending SHMC Chapter 10.08.150 Parking Zones. Actually, that should be Section 10.08.150 Parking Zones.
Okay, so with that correction from chapter to section, I'll entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance. Did I use the right language there, Blair? I have a motion and a second. Call for the vote, Julie.
Counselor Thorstedt.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yep.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Counselor Mahler.
Yes.
Mayor Coleman.
Yes, seven ayes, no nays. Moving on to requests for council action, ordinance number
two for 2023.
Third reading by title only. Ordinance Bill number two for 2023, ordinance number 1308, Sweet Home Ordinance amending SHMC Chapter 10.08, Stopping Standing and Parking with Expediency Clause.
Okay. Either questions, discussion, or a motion.
Madam Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Okay, in regards to these three ordinances, I'm just curious, after we have a potential passage of these, when would the, when would we start enforcement, and what would we need to do to jumpstart the process?
The, the one that you just had the third reading of did not have an expediency clause, and so it's thirty days from passage, so thirty days from tonight that it's effective. This one that we're about to have the third reading of has an expediency clause, and so as soon as it is passed by the council and signed by the mayor, it is effective. And so potentially, as soon as Mayor Coleman puts pen to paper after the vote. The, the other ordinance likewise has an expediency clause and would be effective immediately after signage. The wrinkle with that one, which I can go over when we get to that one, is that we do need to have some signage put in place in the city to make enforcement possible.
Thank you. Okay, so we just had the title only read on this one, which is number two, and I will entertain a motion for adoption. I have a motion and a second. Julie, call for a vote, please.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yep.
Counselor Thorstedt.
Yes.
Mayor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Mahler.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Seven ayes, no nays. This one goes into effect as soon as I sign it. The next one, request for council action ordinance number three for 2023. Blair, please clarify what we will need for this one to go into effect before reading.
This one has an expediency clause, so after sign, passage and signage, it's effective. However, to actually tow an RV, people do need to have adequate notice. And obviously, we can give warnings, you know, forty-eight hours or so, but to more effectively tow people when necessary, tow RVs, we do need to have signs placed in the city that allow us to make sure, basically say that you've had your notice, and this complies with our other ordinances, that this is parking that is against these, the parking regulations that, that we, that you had notice of. And so we would place signs at the entrances to town on.
Just on that.
Good. I'll defer to city attorney.
Yeah, the, the signage, we're working on that, on what we're going to, I've got to talk with the city manager and Blair on what exactly we're going to do on signage. But we're going to be discussing that probably tomorrow, on how we're going to take.
on how we're going to take, uh, uh, make it, uh, fit into our ordinances as they are now.
So as I understand, we'll be ordering some signs and as soon as we receive them and post them, um, and after, if this passes, um, we can enforce it at that time after they're posted?
We can tow at that time. We can still, um, do citations, we can still enforce. It's just, and I believe we can even notice, but that's something that we're working through, um, notice and then tow after due notice. Um, but once we have the signage, we're trying to make sure it's accurate. So once we have the signage, then we'd be able to tow almost immediately. Um.
The concern that we have is that if you, the way our ordinance, the way the parking regulations are now, if you have somebody illegally parked, uh, for more than forty-eight hours, our ordinances allow us to tow. However, all they need to do is move it one space over and then we can't tow them. So if, if they don't have adequate notice and if we have to keep on giving forty-eight hours notice, then that just doesn't improve our situation. We're still playing whack-a-mole. Whereas if we have this signage in place, then we, as soon as they, if they move it to somewhere else, we can then immediately tow. We don't have to wait forty-eight hours for that to be a problem.
And as soon as we have this clarified, which we're hoping to do tomorrow, we will be ordering these signs and we will be placing them as soon as we possibly can.
So Madam Mayor, the, the signage is important and I, I know that we have to have the right verbiage. But the, the notice, it would be the same as what the officers put on the vehicle, like, you know, is it gonna be a little bit word different or? What I'm thinking of, what I'm thinking of, and I have to pass it through here. There might be some notices around town, but we've been, I've been thinking about that and been thinking about that. And the solution that I, 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 I'm leaning towards, and it may change, that's why we're, uh, I need to discuss, is a temporary sign, signage that you take to the, to the vehicle you're concerned with that has all this information on it. And basically, you say, if you don't comply with this within the next twenty-four hours, then we're going to be back to tow. Um, be- because of the fact is that to get noticed to the people that you want to have noticed to comply, you can't go around and have a notice at every parking space in town because basically we, we're covering the whole town here. And a couple, and a, a notice at the beginning and at the end, different places or at City Hall and, and at the police station, I think are helpful. But I think something's going to, we're going to need signings that goes with the, goes with the thing, the vehicle that you're dealing with. Um, so that those people understand that this is what's going to happen. And more important than that is that they get a notice that the law, the, the basic, the procedure has changed in the fact if you get this one time and you go through the twenty-four hours because of the fact, and the twenty-four hours I'm thinking is there because of the fact is that if you're just parked on the street, you don't know that this is in place. And, and most of the, and, and most of the other things that we have, have a sign right there that says two hour parking. So you know that you're in violation if you're not there. Well, you may not know that over on Forty-seventh Street that this, this is happening. So you gotta, you gotta be able to notify them in some way, shape or form that's directly to them. And, uh, under our ordinance right now is in a different ordinance. It has, if there's authorized signage in place, then you can do this. And so that's why we're talking about signage is that we take this, uh, temporary signage and put it there where, where it's, where it's got the whole, in my thinking, it's got the whole little ordinance, the number A there, that explains the whole thing. And you also give them a notice that if they, if this vehicle is found in violation of this ordinance again, is that we're going to tow it without any more, uh, fuss with it, or it can be towed, whether we tow it or not, but it can be towed at that time. And then once that is done, there is a process in place. They don't just lose their vehicle. There's a process in place, just like we've got it, uh, set up under this section. Um, when people violate signage, it goes like a, uh, a hazard vehicle or whatever. So you tow it and then afterwards, if somebody wants a hearing on it to see if it's a proper tow and that sort of thing, they can have a hearing and it goes through that process. On, uh, on your, um, um, examples of something a little different than that is if in, in the statutes that we, or the ordinances that we have right now, let's say there's forty-eight hours for dead storage, you'd go post the vehicle, you'd go post it, you'd wait your forty-eight hours and then you would tow. Well, as Blair says, that's not going to work in this particular case because all they, all you'd have to do is move it to someplace else in town. Um, this ordinance, uh, that we are, we're passing, um, from the concept is that it's citywide where it's at. It isn't move, you don't move around and get out of this. And so that's the idea of, uh, uh, giving them, giving a person notice beforehand and waiting the four, twenty-four hours or whatever they think is appropriate. And then, um, this vehicle is then, uh, can be towed if it's found in a violation of this, of this section again.
Thanks for the clarification, Robert.
Madam Mayor, may I ask one more? Um, so I think that if we tow it or not, it's just towing no matter what, because then that gets the point across. That's just my opinion. But I, I'm sorry if it's not in here or if it is, are we charging them for the tow if they want to get their vehicle?
Yeah, it would be.
Thank you.
It's much like, in any of those situations, it's much like if you get towed, um, for whatever reason, and you want to get it out of impound, you have to pay your towing fees and you have to pay your.
Cause it's like four or five thousand dollars to tow.
It's a lot.
And you were saying, when we talked about the budget, we potentially have some money available for abatement? Okay.
Okay. So thank you for discussion. Yes.
Madam Mayor, uh, if I may, uh, there is one amendment to this ordinance that staff is recommending.
Okay.
And so, uh, that change is under um, section one, uh, A two. It's, right now it says, an uninhabited recreational vehicle may be parked, stored, or left on a public street for up to five cumulative days in a thirty-day period, but only if the vehicle is parked directly in front of the owner's property. Um, we'd like to change that to owner's or tenant's property so that if there is someone who's leasing a property, they're able to park their RV temporarily in front of that home. Because, uh, we want them, we want, somebody who's lawfully leasing a property, we want them to have the same rights that the owner of the property would have also.
Thank you for that catch. So if I'm entertaining a motion on this third and final reading, keep in mind that that's amended to read tenants.
Thank you.
Motion in a second. Julie, uh, call for the vote, please.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Mahler?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Counselor Thorstad?
Yes.
I don't believe I did the third reading. So.
Oh.
I should do that.
You should.
Ordinance bill number three for two thousand and twenty-three, ordinance number one three zero nine, Sweet Home Ordinance amending SHMC Section ten point two eight point zero two zero, limited parking, permit parking with expediency clause.
Thank you. Seven ayes, no nays. Um, ordinance is adopted. Moving on. Reports of committees?
The Western University students have done their community outreach to get data as to our, what our community believes is needed for help. And, um, they will be coming to the committee to, to supply that data to us and then um, collect comments again at that time before they start formulating, um, a plan of action. That's all I've got to report, except for FAC is now open and, um, so far, running pretty good.
Any other reports of committees? Moving on, Mayor's report. Um, in my Mayor's report, I will be going over committees, but first I wanted to say that I took a tour of the FAC today and I'm just very grateful for the Sweet Home Police Department, Sweet Home Public Works, the Sweet Home staff, Sean Morgan, Dominic and his crew of cleaning up everything that they've had to clean up. I'm pretty sure I'll forget somebody, the Ad Hoc Committee on Health that's worked hard on this for many years. Counselor Sanchez was serving on the FAC board, uh, the majority of the council that voted for this to be put in place. The staff are finding a, a path through the difficult legislation that we've faced. Um, but also the fact that it provides a compassionately responsible approach to managing our community and our community's health and the residents that are here. So I just want to say thank you. Um, I did find two things of interest today when I was there. Um, I met a man whose name is Adam and he has been clean. Uh, he's worked with Sean Morgan for the past couple of years, but he's been clean and today was his twenty-second month of being clean and he was celebrating that. And so that was fun to see. Um, but also I learned that eighty percent of the people at the FAC have traumatic brain injuries. One guy's nickname is Shotty because he was shot in the head twice by his babysitter as a child. So, most of those people have serious needs. Um, so I just want to say thank you to the city. Um, it's not all because people are trying to be awful. Um, it's because they actually have some needs. So I just want to say thank you. I think it's running well. They do, they can use some supplies and some volunteers. Uh, please speak to them if you would like to do so. Volunteer there. So, moving on, um, committees. So as the mayor, um, I will be assigning people to committees for the next couple of years. I just want to say thank you to everybody that's contacted me of what you're interested in. Um, I've worked hard to try and align your interests and your experience to a committee. Um, I will be establishing two new committees and, um, I was going to go over these by counselors, but I think I'm going to go over these by committee. Uh, Kelsey has handed out a list of Sweet Home committees to you and, um, so I'm going to briefly review these. We will be having a council training where, um, we'll probably talk some more about these. There might be some clarification and structure, um, of a committee at the next council meeting. But, um, the, the two new committees I will be up, um, creating tonight really won't be in effect until the next council meeting when we'll have some more clarification on the structure there. The Admin and Finance Committee, I am appointing Ja, I'm sorry, Counselor Thorstad, Counselor Mahler and Counselor Trask to that one. I am requesting, because I've learned in this process, that the Charter Review Committee comes out of the Admin and Finest, Finance Committee, so I'm requesting that they, um, discuss the potential of opening that, opening that up. The Ad Hoc Committee on Health, I'm appointing Counselor Gorley to that. Um, the Youth Advisory Council, I am appointing Counselor Sanchez to that. I do have, um, on the Youth Advisory Council, previous Counselor Gerson had this nice folder of, to help you out. I'm sure she's available to, if you want to find out more from her. Area Commission on Transportation, I am appointing Counselor Sanchez. Now, if you read through these, you'll find out some of these were requested by the county to have a counselor represent the city there. Um, so they are regional committees that I'm, I know everybody will represent Sweet Home well, but I really appreciate Counselor Sanchez for the work that she's already done with this committee, but also her, uh, expertise in transportation. I think that fits that committee well. Chamber of Commerce Committee, I'm, um, assigning Counselor Thorstad to that. As a small business owner, I think he'll be a great asset there. Counselor of Gov- Governments, that, um, meets irregularly and I'm also assigning Counselor Thorstad to that as well because, um, you work outside the city and this happens to be in Albany. So, um, I know that City Manager Young, um, has some connection with that. She might be able to help you introduce yourself to that committee as well. Solid Waste Advisory Council is never something anybody likes to be assigned to, so I'm going to assign myself to that one. Park and Tree Committee, I'm going to assign Counselor Trask to that one. Uh, Budget Committee, as we all know, we are all on that one and assigned to that one. The Library Board Committee is, uh, near and dear to my heart. I am going to assign Counselor, um, Richards to that. I'm going to pass the baton to you. Hopefully you'll, um, be a great advocate for them. The Planning Commission, we often do not have a counselor serving on that because, um, it can cause a conflict of interest. So, um, the Sweet Home School District Committee, I learned, it never really became a committee. It was just something there. Just so you guys know, I, I am intentionally staying in good contact with the Sweet Home School District so we can, um, keep a good relationship with them. Uh, the Legislative Committee, I am not going to have that any longer because we are going to, like I said, set up two committees. City Manager Young had requested a Traffic Safety Committee and I agree with her on that one. I'm assigning Counselor Richards to this because of his legislative contacts though, because I think that some of the needs that will be addressed will need to have some legislative contacts to get those accomplished. And the last one that I'm, um, creating is an Art and Culture Committee. And that one will address possible art pieces within the median down on Main Street, but also maybe some, identifying some historical buildings, but other things that can keep the culture of Sweet Home. And, um, I really appreciate Counselor Gorley's interest in that and I'm assigning her to that as well. So that is it, um, that part and my Mayor's report. Moving on to City Manager's report.
Great, thank you. And we will be coming back with, um, actually structuring those committees in the very near future as well. So a couple of things I want to report. So, let's start with one of the fun ones. So on Friday of last week, um, I had the honor of getting to attend the Police Academy graduation. And we had three officers graduate and the overall ceremony was really moving and beautiful too, to see all of these officers and their families. And, um, each family would be going up and all family members would be there. There'd be like eight family members as somebody was graduating, all taking pictures. And it was just really moving to see that for the entire, um, area. I mean, was it all of Oregon? Yes. So it was really, really exciting. And we did, we had three officers graduate. Um, I will let Chief Ogden speak more to it, but I just want to thank him for inviting me. It was really a pleasure to get to be there. Also, we already kind of spoke about this, but FAC is open and currently full. I believe they have twenty-one huts currently, um, built and filled. Oh, good. This is actually back to the police, um, graduation and these were our three officers and their families right there as well. So back to FAC, um, they have about twenty-one huts open. So there's about nine huts that still need to be built. So I'll be reaching out to FAC probably tomorrow to see if there's a way that we can help assist with that or if we can call in some volunteers, um, that can finish that. In the meantime, Old City Hall has been cleaned out. If you have not driven past it, I want to encourage you to do so. I do so daily. Um, it is wonderful to get to see, um, how clean it is and really how clean the entire area is right now too. Um, I wanted to just say huge thank you to Director Springman, to Chief Ogden, to everybody. Um, Director Larson, everybody who was involved in this, because that was a, that was a huge task and undertaking. And, um, also we're going to be doing a bigger thank you to everybody at the next council meeting and we'd like to bring in some of the community members, um, such as Sweet Home Sanitation and the school district and other people who all have made this happen because it was, it was a very much a community effort. Um, we do have the overflow lot over at the Police Department. I don't know if any of you have had a chance to take a look at that, but it has also been kept very clean and neat and orderly. And the Police Department has done a fantastic job of requiring the compliance that's through there. I'll go and check it out each morning, just as they're supposed to be taking down their tents and they are. And everything's been looking really good. So that's been a very pleasant surprise. We were cautiously optimistic, but that is, is looking good so far, which we appreciate. Um, I'm going to let Director Larson speak to this a little bit more, but we have an exciting project starting on Monday where the light audit is actually going to start. So if the community sees a large car with a thing sticking out of it, please, um, please be very respectful of them and give them their space as they drive slowly. And that's what's going on. Um, and one final thing, and then I'll turn it over to Director Larson. But we would like to move the council training retreat to February twenty-third and twenty-fourth. We hope that would work for everybody, but I'll speak to everybody after this as well and we can see if that works. No? this as well and we can see if that works. No? Okay, well, we'll talk. We'll have another kind. It's, it's, it's been a little challenging to find the date. So we'll all try to talk really quickly if everybody can stay for just a couple minutes after the council meeting. All right. So that's it for me. Thank you all very much.
So just an update on the project. As you probably recall, we entered into an agreement with Amaresco, which has to do with LED light, streetlight conversion. As you know, we don't actually own our streetlights. They're Pacific Power's property, but we pay for them. And so there's a process to go through to get those upgraded, but Pacific Power only does that when a light breaks. If you want the benefit of the lower rates for an LED, the process is to have a company like Amaresco come in and they do the whole project and then they get paid out of the savings that we experience from those lower rates. This portion of the project, they're doing the initial audit of all the, all the lights. And so they, they are putting together the list of all the streetlights that are going to be a part of this project, what type of light they are, what needs to be changed about them. The interesting thing that we got to see this morning in our kickoff meeting is that the, they actually use a vehicle, kind of like the Google Street View that you probably have seen, that drives through all the streets to document what infrastructure is already there. And so this, it has a camera rig on top and it, it's actually not as excited as, as you might think. It's basically a pickup truck with a camera mounted on top of it. But it's, and it's not as, doesn't stick out as much as you might think. But what that camera does as it drives by is it takes pictures 360 degrees. And, and it, the, the software that it has, the, the file that we get has, you know, it'll identify a streetlight, for example, and then that gets tagged to a map. And then it has multiple angles of photos of that streetlight. So you can see the pole, you can see the label on the pole, you can see the underside. So you can see what kind of lamp is inside that pole and everything. I think it's really cool. The cool thing is, is that after this project is over, we'll still have this file. So we'll have a, our, basically our own Google Street View file of pictures of every street in the city. But the important thing right now is they're going to be doing that Tuesday, Monday and Tuesday. And so this vehicle is actually going to be driving fairly slow, probably about 15 miles per hour. And it'll have its flashers on, but we just want people to be kind and respectful and patient as, as it comes through and takes pictures. Because this is taking pictures of infrastructure. It's not taking pictures of any people, not intentionally at least. If you jump in front of it, you probably will have your picture taken, but please don't do that. We just want people to be understanding and patient. But this is actually really kind of a, a cool part of the project and we're looking forward to the results. It's, it should help with traffic enforcement at the same time.
Any other department directors report? Anyone like to share anything?
Yeah, I would just like to add to what Kelsey said. We had a great time at the graduation at the Police Academy. Garrett Bulcom, Alan Kreip, and Daniel Gurkman all graduated. And I want to extend a thank you to our city manager. I've been here for 25 years and somebody could correct me if I'm wrong, but I can't remember a time in my 25 years here that a city manager has come to the Police Academy graduation. And so it's pretty significant. It's a, it's a huge morale booster to troops and it just shows, you know, support. And so I'm very, very thankful for that. So yeah, all three of them now are back into the field training program. One of them is due to go out on their own very soon. The other two are not too far behind. So that's pretty exciting. We had one, Cody McPherson enter into the academy this Monday. So he's going to be there for the next 16 weeks. And we'll be excited to get him back in, I think, May sometime. Also, the overflow at the PD for FAC has been going really well. We haven't, I mean, we've had like a couple of campers. They've kept it pretty clean. And if there's any trash, we just go out there and pick that up. We have, I'm excited, we're getting our new key card access system into the PD, updated here soon. Sunset Electric came out today and met with me. This has been a project that has been, kind of been put on hold because the parts for the system, they haven't been able to get. So we're excited to get that going again. It should integrate with everything here at City Hall, which is going to be wonderful. And then for the extra position that our city manager talked about, I'm excited about that as well. To be able to really focus on some of these traffic issues in town, I know that that has been a common theme the last couple of years that I've been attending this. And I really want to put a plan in place. The only obstacle to that is, you know, the hiring process is, it takes a while to get a new position up and running. But I do have a plan to, with these new people coming out of the academy, to address some of these traffic issues in the meantime, with having our captain oversee some of these things. So I'm super excited about this captain position too. So anyway, that's my update. So any questions?
Madam Mayor, may I add one?
She just left the line.
But we'd like to go ahead and read it. For best for the community. So this is a card to thank the city council members and also the employees for all the work, effort, and time committed to the children, families, and residents of Sweet Home. So the children's presence in Sweet Home can be safe and secure in this wonderful town. These cupcakes are a small token to help you know how valued you are. Sincerely, Mary Massey.
Thank you. Yes. Any counsel, well, nope, I'm sorry, Finance Director, City Attorney, do you have a report? Okay. Counsel Business for Good of the Order?
Madam Mayor, if I may. I know we want to get out of here. I apologize for taking more time, but I just want to follow up with what Chief Ogden said about the transportation, traffic safety issues. Tomorrow is a lobby day for cities at the state capitol and I have four appointments with senators and representatives on the Transportation Committee. There's a Senate Bill 445 that they're interested in trying to move forward to offer rural cities with 15,000 residents or less, funding for traffic safety devices. And so I would encourage every counselor to lobby for that, to our Senator Cedric Hayden, who is the chief sponsor, as well as citizens in the community to send emails or calls in support of Senate Bill 445 so we can maybe get some funding outside of ODOT to the small rural communities that need help with their traffic safety. That's all. Thank you.
I'll also be there too. So I just wanted to say thank you.
So I just found out about it today. But I'm going to do something because Pleasant Valley is very dangerous. I've spoken to Commissioner about this Senate bill and I hope, I hope that it can move forward, but it takes a long time. So it's going to Transportation Committee and then the Ways and Means, then they vote and it's very expensive, but I hope they're willing to invest. And then, sorry, lastly, one of the commissioners had suggested while you're thinking about committees, is having some sort of homeless committee, if that is something that we're willing to think about. Because right now we're in the honeymoon phase and it's going to take support from the city council for a long-term support. And so he suggested maybe meeting every quarter if there is a committee for, to support it going forward. Thank you.
Anything else for the Good of the Order? All right. I'll adjourn this meeting at 9:09 PM.